Can you hear me now? Thank you. I like to call a regular meeting. The order, May 27th. I'd like to introduce Mr. Bob Schwartz, Bowling Green District. Mr. Leon Smith from B Church. Carol Horton from Port Royal. Chris Almira from Mattapanai. And I'm George Weaver from Madison. I'd also like to introduce staff. I used to do this because Mike Fincham is actually sitting up here with us. This is Mike Fincham. He's the director of planning. He never sits with us, so anyway. Chris McKenzie, are you on there?
I am here, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, Craig Pennington. He's our planner. Lisa Zek, she's our administrative assistant and planning director. Okay, I'd like everybody to stand up and let's do the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. Okay, the first thing I'd like to do is ask for a motion to approve the March 25th meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
Throw move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been approved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Tonight, we're going to have the public hearings. And this gets a little involved, so I'll ask first that Lisa Zek read the protocol for the public hearings, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We actually hear you.
Of the commission. The purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comments. Applicants or their representative will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding this matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or the representative will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you. First thing I'd ask for is, we're dealing with TXT 07, 2021. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Caroline County by amending Article 15, Supplement Regulations, Section 15, Highway Corridor Overlay District. I have a staff report, please. Mr. Fincham, I'm sorry. I used to see you sit up here and go, can I have a report? Oh, sorry. Please, Mr. Fincham.
Chairman, members of the commission. First public hearing tonight is an ordinance amendment, TXT 07-2021, which would amend Article 15, Section 15 of the Caroline County zoning ordinance, which is the highway corridor overlay district. It would add two sections of roads in the county to the Hcod regulation. First would be Route 639 west of Lake Landor to the intersection of 738 in Childsburg, and then 738 west to Hartlow Road out to Spotsylvania County line. The second one would be Route 606 from the intersection of Edge Hill Academy Road to the Spotsylvania County line. During the course of the solar amendments, several board members requested the addition of these two roadway sections to add these roads for the protections that are included in the Solar Development Regulation with landscaping, buffering provisions to mitigate the visual impacts of those uses. The board referred these amendments to the planning commission for your consideration.
Any question from the board?
Mr. Fincham, this was last amended on January 26th of this year. It's only been amended five times since 2011. So this is solely for the solar panel situation?
That's the driving force, yes, sir. The corridor would still be subject to the Hcod regulations that are contained in that full section, but that is the intent, is to include these two corridors, recognizing the board just adopted the solar regulation and wanted to provide some additional protection there.
Very good, thank you, sir.
So this means, Mr. Fincham, that the Hcod is still protected in those areas?
If recommended for approval and adopted by the board, yes.
Thank you. Any other question from the board? Should we open the public hearing? I'd like to now open a public hearing on TXT 07, 2021, the public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak, please step up to the mic. I'll ask again. Anybody in the public wishes to speak in reference to TXT 07, 2021, please step up to the mic. Last call. Anybody who wished to speak in reference to TXT 07, 2021, please step up to the mic now. Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Any questions? Gentle people? Fincham, you okay? Do you know what I'd like to hear, a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please, sir.
Please, sir.
Whereas rezoning request RZ 07. Oh, yes, there it is. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TXT 07, 2021, I recommend that TXT 07, 2021 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for the recommendation of approval.
You're a second. You're a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your next two public hearings are for rezonings, RZ 04-2021 and RZ 05-2021. These two rezonings are related to the same development application, so I'll just briefly give you one overall staff report related to both rezonings. I think we could probably do one public hearing on the two rezonings and then have separate motions related to that. RZ 04-2021 is for Maria Mize owner, Flint Acquisitions LLC applicant. They're requesting a rezoning from Rural Preservation to M1 Industrial on a portion of Tax Map 83-A-15. It contains approximately 5.19 acres. The property is located at 11,498 Chesterfield Road in the Mattapanai Boating District. The proposed use is industrial for the development of a 1 million square foot warehouse and distribution facility. 2030 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as being in the Carmel Church Community Plan with the office, industrial, and heavy industrial designation. Second rezoning is RZ 05-2021 for R20207 LLC owner and Flint Acquisitions LLC applicant. They're requesting amendment to existing proffers of Caroline Commerce Center, zoned M1 Industrial with condition consisting of approximately 100.2 acres on tax parcels 82-A-122A, 82A-23, 83-8-5, 83-A-41. Property is located at the southeast corner of Carmel Church Lou Macessin Drive in the Mattapanai Boating District. And the proposed use is to modify the proper general development plan accepted with RZ 03-98, RZ 01-2008, and RZ 03-2013 for purposes of increasing the number of access points to State Route 652 to support the development of the 1 million square foot distribution and warehouse facility. 2030 Comprehensive Plan designates this area to be located within the Carmel Church Community Plan as office industrial and heavy industrial uses. In your packet, you have a number of materials related to these two rezoning requests. You have an overall general development plan which shows the location of the 1.1 billion square foot warehouse and distribution facility. And you also have a plan that shows the 5.19 acre parcel of land that is proposed to be rezoned from RP to M1 Industrial, which is the subject of the first rezoning application. The overall development plan and use of the site, the 1.1 billion square foot facility, requires the rezoning of the 5.19 acre parcel of land. And once rezoned, it would be incorporated under the same proffers as the applicant is requesting with the rezoning, the proffer amendment for the 100.2 acre parcel of land. Also in your packet are the revised proffers that the applicant has proposed to replace the three sets of proffers that were included with the previous rezonings. As stated earlier, the request also includes a request to modify the number of entrances to serve the industrial site. The original proffers limit the number of entrances to two on the east side of Route 652 for all of the referenced zoning parcels. The applicant is requesting two additional entrances, which at the end of the day would allow up to four entrances on all those parcels with three specifically to serve this application. TIA was performed, there were some questions related to the TIA from VDOT, but they were able to get their comments in. And you have staff's comments related to the application that were included in that.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. I think the first thing I'd like to know is, how does the planning commission feel about this? Are there any questions? Are there any issues? Staff is here, I believe the applicant is here, or the applicant is here, okay? So I think that's the first thing I would like to know is, I guess I've kindly expressed how I feel about this.
Mr. Weaver? I think the appropriate action would be to hold the public hearing, let the applicant make his presentation, and receive any comments, and then the commission can discuss the matter.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Fincham. Okay, so what I've been advised at this particular stage is that Mr. Fincham believes that we should open the public hearing. So in that case, in reference to both of these, right?
Yes, I think you can have one public hearing on both rezoning applications.
Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing? What's matter? So you want the presentation to be done by the applicant first? Then please, I'm sorry. I'm new at this program, you know, they just put me in this position just to see how screwed up I can do it, so.
You're doing a great job, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commission. My name is Charlie Payne, I represent the applicant, I appreciate your time this evening. It's been a while since I've been to Caroline County, notwithstanding the COVID issues. It's good to see you all in person, and it's always a pleasure to be in Caroline County. I do have a PowerPoint, and as Mr. Fincham has noted, I'm going to combine the two zoning applications into my one presentation, if that's okay with you. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have thereafter. Everybody see the PowerPoint? We're good?
We're good, thank you.
Great, thank you. Just real quick on the background of the applicant, Flint Development, it's a national commercial industrial developer, got over 30 years of experience in developing industrial properties. They're headquartered in Kansas City, and as you can see, they've got projects all across the country from Virginia to Missouri. They are currently looking at two sites in Caroline County. The Virginia Bazaar, which will be before the Board of Supervisors for a rezoning on June 8th, and this site at Carmel Church. The investment for each site is about $70 million, and it's planned for each site about 1.1 million square feet in warehouse space. As many of you may or may not know, one of the disadvantages to this region in competing with the rest of the state, and for that matter, the mid-Atlantic, is available warehouse space and having it ready for users to come in. So the plan, as you'll see in our presentation, is to, if this is approved, is to acquire the site, start construction and development soon as we possibly can as a spec build-out. And obviously during that period of time now, currently recruiting users to the site, we think it's a great advantage to have the spec building in place. So you won't have a project that sits around for a bunch of years before it's actually developed. You're going to have a project that's going to start construction immediately and have immediate value to Caroline County, especially in tax dollars, and we'll get to that in just a little bit. As staff had noted, the property, the overall project is 105 acres, it includes the five acre, five plus acre portion that Mr. Fincham had noted that is currently zoned RP. We're requesting a rezoning to M1. There's also a proffer amendment for approximately 102.4 acres of three parcels, four parcels, that were previously approved for rezoning and currently zoned M1. What we're asking for is a proffer amendment on those parcels to basically add an additional entrance. The other proffers that would be included that go with the proffer amendment in this rezoning is a dedication of right-of-way. And we've actually sort of narrowed down what the particular uses would be, although Mr. Fincham has reminded me, that captures about 85% of the M1 zoning districts. But of that focus, they are viable uses that I think Caroline County would be very attracted to. But our main focus is going to be warehouse storage districts. As I noted earlier, the proposal is a 1.1 million square foot facility. Again, the plan is, if this is approved, to start construction immediately, to build it as a spec site. We're very confident that we're going to be able to attract a user to it. Again, it gives an advantage to Caroline County to have the site in place. I'm sure Mr. Wilson could reiterate that, that the great advantage of not only having a site that's zoned, but having a site that has a facility. The project does conform, as staff have noted, to the Comprehensive Plan to create an employment center, an investment environment, and adhere to the Carmel Church Community Plan of business expansion and creation of employment opportunities. And I'll get into a little bit more of that in just a bit. It also supports your Comprehensive Plan goals of the 70/30 tax generation revenue ratio, where you generate more commercial, where you generate more commercial tax towards that 30% versus your 70% goal for residential. So this project will certainly help contribute to that baseline for commercial tax revenue. Here's a copy of the General Lot Development Plan, I'm sure you've seen it in your packet. Just not to ever correct Mr. Finch, because he's usually very right, but there's three entrances, one of which would be emergency, there's not four. All off of Ruth or Glen. This site is right, it is right below to the south of the Macessin facility, which I'm sure you're very familiar with. Here's a rendering of an elevation of the facility itself. You see to the left, that's on the site. Ruth or Glen is to the immediate north. And you'll see the Macessin building in comparison on the right-hand side to our site, which is to the south of it. There's another rendering, and we have also proffered these renderings as well. If the site's constructed, it's going to generally look like this site. Economic development, I know that's very important to the county. As I'd stated earlier, this is a $70 million investment in just this one project at Carmel Church. It is estimated to generate $650,000 in real estate tax revenue. It, over time, over a 30-year period, that will equal about $21 million in real estate taxes. Of course, commercial facilities don't have impacts on some of your greater county services like schools and parks. And the initial assessment, we believe, would be around $85 million. Long-term permanent jobs, we believe the project will generate about 575 permanent jobs and 300 temporary construction jobs. The average salary for the permanent jobs is going to be about $58,000, so a very good job creator, paying a very good average salary. Transportation, the transportation analysis that we did shows that the level of services will not be degraded at Ruth or Glen, that we remain level of C or better. Access to the site, as we had noted, will be off 652 Ruth or Glen, and it's near, as we stated, Carmel Church, Rogers Park Boulevard. Access will be obviously to I-95, the exit 104, and we are dedicating 55 feet of new right-of-way from the center line on Route 652. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and appreciate your time this evening. Thank you. We're still in the public hearing, so. I think it's appropriate to do the public hearing. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'd like to open the public hearing on RZ 04, 2021, and RZ 05, 21. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak, please come up to the podium. Give us a location, name.
How are you? Michael Albrecht, Mattapanai District. My only concern, or one of the biggest concerns, is the entrances, exits on Route 652. If you're familiar with it, that is a very, very small road already in an area that is inundated and saturated with truck traffic. Something to consider, and I hope you consider that very carefully because of the fact that it is, not too much longer when some of the residents will be completely trapped from the truck traffic.
Your biggest problem right now is the traffic?
Traffic and the entrances and exits that are proposed on Route 652. Very small two-lane road, very small. Even with some upgrades, you still have the traffic. On a main thoroughfare, you have Caroline Pines down the road, of course, going back and forth. So I feel that it may impact the traffic even more than the truck traffic does now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else, based on this public hearing, wants to step up, talk about RZ 04, 2021, RZ 05, 2021, please step up now. Gary, know the man well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So delighted to be here and thank you for taking up this issue this evening, it's important to the county. In fact, this is critically important to the county, that this project be rezoned for the acreage that rounds it off and for the proffers to be approved. We've been working for this type of investment for years. It is in the right place, it has been zoned this way appropriately for years, and we've been working with the landowner for years who has been cooperative in doing the things that are required to make the site marketable for investment. They've cleared the trees, they've done the studies, wetland delineations and mitigations, so forth. It is designed for this kind of project. The investment is $70 million, that's great, we all like that, the schools will like that, our emergency services personnel will like that. But more importantly, it's not the end of the payday for this project, and this is made for an end-user to go in. There will be machinery, there'll be tools, so forth, business personal property. The payday increases as the end-user comes into this site. Jobs, again, is another payoff for this. You saw Mr. Payne's presentation, nearly 600 jobs. That is actually a reasonable estimation from some of the hires we've seen for similar-sized buildings. It could be less, but this is a reasonable case to make, and I think that also will. And I think that also will result in a payroll that is spent. Some of that in the county, which then spreads out and multiplies for the rest of our industries and creates more prosperity for everyone. I would like to say that there is no risk for this building remaining empty for long. In fact, my prediction to the developer, and this has been something I've said to others, I predict this building will be sold or leased before it is completed. There is a huge demand for this kind of facility right now. And Caroline County never has had an industrial facility that's been empty for any length of time once someone has moved on and vacated. A recent example was of Russell Stovers was replaced by poultry, excuse me, not poultry, by produce distribution. So, and that took a mere matter of months to happen. So I don't think this is going to be a big problem there. Traffic, I think it's a great question, and it's something that should be addressed. And I believe the proffers have been addressing this. It's difficult to say how many trucks will be coming in and out and so forth, but it is a flexible proffer that I've seen being applied that if there's more that needs to be done at a later date, the applicant is open to those sort of things to make that right. But at this particular point, you have your entrances divided up, which I think helps reduce that. But it is a valid question, and, and I think it's been well addressed. So we'd like the commission, the county would, the economic development department would like the commission to vote in favor of the proffer changes and the rezoning, and we encourage you to do so tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Good to see you. Is there anyone else out there want to speak in reference to RZ-04 2021, RZ-05 2021 as a public hearing? Please step forward. Hearing none, close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the PC to the applicant? Please.
Yes, ma'am.
How far, how far is this proximity from I-95? May not do have the math, but...
Quarter mile or so, yeah, about quarter mile. It's just, it's just south of McKesson. The current, it's just south of the, the current McKesson site.
Okay.
Or just west of the current, I'm sorry, just west of the current McKesson.
Roadwise, it's a little further than quarter mile. What, be about? Close to a mile, the trucks driving in, get off?
I don't know the exact distance, Michael. Do you know? Roadwise, our traffic engineer believes about quarter mile.
Okay. I mean, because the, the job possibility and the taxes, you know, look great. You know, trying to fix a way to, a concern to address the concern about the traffic in that area. If that area grows, you know. So can we bring back up the slide where you were showing a proposal of what the building might look like and where the park is? Is that possible? Because I had questions on that. I just wanted to know where the, I only saw two entrances on that slide.
I get ahead of you, sure.
So, yeah. I think that's it. Just before questions. But anyway, I saw two entrances.
Yeah, there's three entrances on this site.
Can you go back to the actual, though, picture?
The elevation. Well, and remember, this GDP is what's been proffered. The elevation may not depict all the entrances because it's just an elevation for depiction purposes. But the GDP does show all the entrances, and that's what's been proffered, which shows the three entrances.
So, we have that map, so it shows all the... Does that, I know we received some new information tonight about...
There is, Carol.
Okay, so you want a total of three?
Yes, ma'am. Three are necessary for the operational effectiveness of the proposed project. I'm sorry, sir? No, sir.
Thank you, because what, what appears to be happening, sorry. What appears to be happening here is we're getting back to what were the original proffers when this was rezoned, going back, whatever, I can't remember how long ago, okay? And I think that's where my problem comes in. Me, I'm going to tell you how I feel, okay? It's okay. It's not going to bother you, or...
Absolutely not.
My concern is to be a fact that I think that this new proposal that's in front of us now has very limited controls over what we can build and what we can't build. Now, I went back and I looked at the old proffers, okay? There were restrictions there as to, for the same piece of prop, same piece of property, same size building, but there were restrictions there on what could be put on this property. And now I look at the new information that's being submitted now. I see that most of those have been eliminated or excused somehow, okay? And I think, gentlemen, just what bothers me is the mere fact that I think we're looking to go car blanche on this project, okay? If I go back to the original proffers that were there, okay? There were restrictions as to what you could build and what you couldn't do. Now, all of a sudden, I feel as if what's being submitted to us allows for too many barriers. So as commissioners, and you guys, you all speak the honest truth, you guys decide what you think. But that's the way I feel. I'm really concerned that why should we now allow this project, the same project, same land, same developer, okay? To suddenly have no restrictions on what they're able to build? And I think that's our problem. That's my problem. Thank you.
Well, I can tell you the logic behind what we were thinking. One, the, the prior rezoning didn't commit to start construction on building a $1.1 million facility, which is going to have an immediate benefit to Caroline County. Mr. Wilson was correct, and it was, and, and my apologies for skipping over the fact that not only are you generating real estate tax revenue, but once there's a user in place, you're going to be generating significant amount of machinery and tools tax revenue. So that 643 is a baseline number. So this is going to be a significant opportunity for Caroline County. Now, what we don't want to do, we're, we're confident, very confident that we're going to have a warehouse and distribution use. That is the market. The market is very viable now. We understand that Amazon is just a few miles north of here. They're generating a lot of activity along this corridor on I-95, as well as other large distribution and manufacturing retail centers. And putting this facility in Caroline County and building it as spec today is going to give you a significant advantage to attracting that user. But the one thing we don't want to do is to restrict the potential for other viable users to come to the site, which is why we've included industrial flex, for example, which is, which is basically folks who assemble computers and technology-type-based companies. So we're not looking to bring in a user that will not be viable or job creator for Caroline County. We think the market is ripe for a tier-one user on the site. But at the same time, you're going to make a $70 million investment, and you're going to do it today, not 10 years from now. You want to create as much flexibility as you can to attract the user. So I, I appreciate the chairman's comments. But I, I, I feel like what we have proposed is reasonable, and it's reasonable for purposes of what my client is going to be doing, and that's making an immediate investment to build a spec building. Now, what we've also included in our proffer statement is, is we get a heavy manufacturer and who would generate more traffic than what we've studied. So distribution generates a lot of traffic, right? So our study is we're on the higher end of what the use would be. But a heavier manufacturer could produce more traffic. So what we have said is if we do attract a heavy manufacturer, who is it? That would be a job creator and still would be a significant tax revenue generator, that we would study, update our TIA to see what the impact would be. But today, the level of services remains C or better. It doesn't change. We don't degrade those levels of services with our proposed use. And as, as, as you guys know, the comprehensive plan encourages this exact use at this location. It's been previously rezoned for it. The comprehensive plan encourages that use. So I think it's a reasonable use and a reasonable proposal. And we're certainly open to listening to concerns regarding specific uses that you would not want to see there. We certainly are, and we certainly will look at those. But what we tried to do is create a flexible environment to attract viable users, and we think we've done so with this proposal.
Well, I went back and I looked at the old application. And I do not understand why we cannot, you cannot, because I cannot demand anything, okay? Why you cannot proffer what was proffered the last time around, okay? And I have it right here in front of me. I just think, right now, I would prefer, and I'm talking to the board in general, okay? I would like our applicant to go back and look at the old proffer say and see if they cannot provide this for us, this application, same piece of property.
Mr. Weaver? Mr. Weaver? This is Chris. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, Chris. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mr. Weaver, yes.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Fincham can correct me, but I believe this has been scheduled for expedited hearing before the board next month. So, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fincham, but I think that, that if you want to make a recommendation, you'll need to make it on the, on the application for you tonight, because it's going for the board.
The application that's in front of me, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I'm going to say the same thing, Chris, and I appreciate the input. I would like the applicant to go back and look at the last application for the same piece of property, same size building, same roadways, and maybe be able to include this into their application, that's all I'm saying. Is that correct? Chris, am I, I can say that?
Well, no, you'll have to make a motion tonight. So you, you, you know, you're going to, and really, they do have to be voluntary proffers from the applicant. So I think you're, you know, if you want to make a recommendation, you'll have to make it on what's for you tonight. If you want the board to consider it.
You have to make, if, if you forward a recommendation, you have to make it on the application in front of you. You can express your concerns, but you actually have to vote on the application that is submitted, either up or down.
And I appreciate that, Michael, and I'm glad you put it that way. Because as far as I'm concerned, if the applicant, and Chris, you can tell me I'm wrong. As far as I'm concerned, if the applicant is not willing to set this back for 30 days and look at this application in a different light, then I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to vote no on this application. Is that okay to say, sir? Is that okay to say?
You can, yes, you can vote. You can vote however you'd like to vote. Certainly, it's, but I believe that, you know, this is scheduled for hearing next month. So as it stands right now, like Mr. Fincham said, it's, it's the application that, that's for you right now that, and you can motion whatever vote you feel appropriate.
I would have an alternative, perhaps, if I could offer that up versus sitting it back.
Well, that's what, sitting here with commissioners, okay? I mean, Gary, no, no big to do here. Oh, that's the way I feel about it, okay? I'm concerned that we're opening a blank check here. So now, if you want to bring it to a vote, the commissioner isn't here, allow them to vote. I think that's the wrong thing to do. I think we're trying to, I am, I am trying to propose a compromise, okay? Now, I know Chris says I can't do this, correct, Chris? I cannot do this. But I'm trying to get this project, I am all for building. I'm all for construction. Anybody who's sat in this meeting, they know how I feel, okay?
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please.
Absolutely.
Could we take about a five-minute recess?
Got to shut out now. Is that okay, Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Bring this meeting back to order, if I may. Where do you wish to go from here?
Kermel, I'll state.
Absolutely. Well, I should, I should say that. Is he allowed to speak now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
End of the day, traffic concern me. Talking about three entrances, right? All of it coming back to the intersection, correct? I mean, you know, we got two subdivision, two truck stops, got a beautiful welcome center. To me, the traffic, we have to deal with the traffic. My concern is the traffic. How are we going to solve it? Just jamming that intersection more and more and more.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate that. And I'm not going to suggest this is going to be a light traffic generator. It's not. It's going to be a heavy traffic generator. It's a 1.1 million-square-foot facility. But our study shows that we don't degrade the level of services below a C, and that's what we're required to do. Now, that study is done in conjunction with VDOT in the county. They agree to the scoping, and that's how the analysis occurs. It's not something that we just simply make up. We have to go through a process with the county and VDOT to get there. Now, this area is encouraged for this use. So, traffic is expected. Heavy traffic is expected for this area. It's very close to the interchange. It's not going to migrate off in the neighborhoods. It's not going to migrate deeper into the county. So, it's going to be simply getting off the interstate, going a quarter-mile, and getting back on the interstate. That's the traffic activity that's going to occur. Now, you've got Kermel Loop, of course. That was built for this very reason, to handle industrial traffic. So, I hear you in regards to traffic. I think we've addressed the traffic issue. The additional entrance allows us to help break up that traffic and access. And, you know, it simply is consistent with the use, and I think that it's been properly analyzed and evaluated. And I think, again, at the end of the day, it's going to be an asset to the county, and that's a key piece.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, address the traffic issue a bit more. Everything Charlie is saying, the applicant is saying, I agree with. I think when we talk about three entrances, what we're talking about is dividing up the traffic, so it enters and exits more quickly and gets it off the road more swiftly. Also, trucks and people, a building like this, you're not going to have everybody working one shift. It's very unlikely you're going to invest in this building and just have everybody show up for eight hours a day. This is going to be divided up over the entire day, perhaps even the entire twenty-four-hour period. So, we're not talking about putting all this traffic on the road at one time. So, I think that's another thing to consider. Finally, when we were working on McKesson to get them approved, VDOT didn't even ask us to perform a TIA, because the Loop Road and the intersection were designed specifically for industrial traffic. We did it this time. We're a little off the Loop Road, just a little bit, but very close to it. I think we're talking about roads that are designed for exactly what we're doing, and the modifications that are offered are there in case they're needed. If I can address the list that's concerning the chairman, we just were looking at them. We're not doing any of those things, or at least most of those things. It's not going to be a tire recycling place, and we're not going to break up stones in a million-square-foot building. If I agree with the chairman on anything about this, the applicant probably should have just said, "We're not doing those things. Let's not leave them in there and take them out." Well, they're kind of stuck to them. And what we need from you this evening is to pass this up to the board with a yes, perhaps with a caution. But they're not planning to do those things. It doesn't make sense to build a million-square-foot building and then do the activities that are described in the proffer list that was exempted before. They will be exempted now. They're probably, we looked at the listeners, that maybe only two of these things, and we're not even sure what the language and definition of some of these things are. You know, research is certainly something that could happen in this building, but no one's planning on putting nitro or hazardous materials, or whatever they may be, in this building specifically to be hazardous. There are mechanical and industrial processes that have anything that you could define. So, we don't know how that definition even works. So, we're looking at these proffers that probably should have been taken up, the chairman had appointed, but they didn't, and they can't get to their developer-owner this evening to get a yea or nay on that. They'd be well happy to work on that list before it gets to the board of supervisors. And I think with your recommendation, that's something that will happen, because we're not doing those things. It's just, you know, it's a regrettable addition to the overall document.
I understand, Gary. I understand, Gary, and that's why I asked that specifically, because you and I can sit here and we can state anything that we feel is right or wrong, okay?
Sure.
The trouble is, this board, Planning Commission Board, is now given an application, and I went back and I looked at the old application, which is what I'm supposed to do. This is my responsibility. As chairman, that's what I did. I went back and looked at the old application, and I said, "Well, why is this application for the same site, Gary, okay? Same building area?" Okay, okay, there's always a discrepancy between the entrances and the exits, and I understand that, okay? I didn't even get to that. I was just concerned that an applicant brings an application to us that is totally different from the last application. That's all I'm saying, Gary. That's all I'm saying. And the last application, did we not approve it? Yes, we did. And I still feel that this is a good application for this particular area. I do, okay? I am for building. I am for construction. I like people to work, okay? But the application that came to us as planning commissioners, and that's all we are, okay, as planning commissioners, we have no control over what might be there and what might not be there. That's all I'm saying, Gary. And that's all I was, and yes, I know, Mr. McKenzie told me I stepped over the line, and I've done it before. Like my mom used to say, I've been thrown out of better places than this. So, you know, I just, I'm concerned. That's my whole thing, and you and I go back a long time, Gary. I totally believe we should have as much building as we possibly can. In fact, when I was coming here, I went by the tractor supply building. I'm like, "There's actually a building there. Oh, my goodness gracious." That's what I like to see. I like to see buildings, okay? I'm just concerned that, we've done this a couple of times where we tried to push things through before, and a lot of times, I don't see a result. Now, the little projects, the twenty-five thousand square footers, the thirties, the forties, those I see going up like there's no tomorrow's, and I'm happy for that. I really, really am happy for that. I'm just a little concerned that this is a carte blanche request, and I'm going to let it go that way, because otherwise, Mr. McKenzie will yell at me again.
I have a comment, too, just similar to what the other commissioners said, because I'm here to represent my constituents, and, you know, and to listen to them, what they want, but also to make sure that we get guarantees for them. This is a great opportunity for jobs, you know, and taxes for the county. But I am concerned about what will go in the building. You know, we don't have anything in writing, and also, I'm concerned about the traffic. I looked at the VDOT report recommending some left-hand turn lanes, et cetera, and I don't have anything in writing that I can guarantee that my constituents. So, similar concerns.
Well, let's work backwards, and I'll come back to your question regarding the left turn lanes. So, here's what we've proffered, just so we're clear. And what we've proffered is what we're limited to, okay? So, there is a limit. Office, manufacturing, warehousing, storage, distribution, industrial or flex space and related uses, okay? Here's what was proffered out before. Research, experimental, and testing facilities involving hazardous materials, coal, wood, lumber yards, and sawmills, automobile rebuilding, truck repairing or overhauling, tire retreading or recapping, manufacturing, recycling, and previously manufactured batteries, asphalt manufacturing and mixing, crushed stone operations, automobile graveyard or junkyards, sand and gravel operations, sanitary landfills, waste disposal facilities. With the exception of one on that list that was previously proffered out, and that being perhaps, or maybe two, A and B, research, experimental, and testing facilities, which could fall under manufacturing, or automobile rebuilding, repairing, or overhauling, which could fall under manufacturing, none of those uses are being proposed by us. In fact, they're prohibited by us limiting what we're proposing to do. But what I would propose and ask is that if you desire to move this forward, that you do so with the condition that we review those initially prohibited uses prior to the board of supervisors here. We'll do that. And for those that we can proffer out, which I'm pretty confident we can proffer out probably ninety percent, if not all of them, before the board, we'll do so. I just can't do it right now. I don't have the authority to. But I'm pretty confident, based on what we have proposed, that we'd limit and prohibit those uses already. See, what we've proffered are limited uses. So, that's what we're stuck with. Warehouse distribution, office, manufacturing. That's what we're stuck with. Now, the manufacturing one is the one, well, does it trickle into some of these other uses, the A and the B that I was just talking about? But we're willing, if you're willing, your decision makers, not us, but we would not have a problem with you conditioning an approval with us looking at those prohibited proffers, prohibited uses before, and proffering them out. We have no problem with that, okay? So, I want the chairman to understand that his comments were appreciated. We understand it. And if the planning commission so concurs to move forward with that condition, we will take a look at that and address it prior to the board. The next piece of this is traffic. Level of services, again, pursuant to the traffic study. If you look at the current proffers that are approved, we're supposed to update the transportation impact analysis before you propose a new use. Well, we've done that, based on what we're proposing, warehouse, storage, and distribution, which is one of the higher intense uses for purposes of our traffic study, of what's allowed under M1. And we're not degrading the level of services to say C or better. The turn lanes don't warrant the day. It's a preference, but we're dedicating the right-of-way, which is different. We're actually proffering elevations, which did not occur before. So, there are also real benefits to what we're doing here with this new proposal, a lot more benefits, including this, the original proffer on this was approved, I think, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and most recently updated in two thousand twelve. There's no building. There's no construction. There's no investment. This is coming now. And the only reason this is being expedited is because it's real. We are moving. We want to move forward. We want to invest in Carroll Island County. And I know you, and I know you're looking at the best interest of the taxpayers, and you want those new jobs, and you want those tax revenues that help schools and public safety. I know it. We're asking, give us a shot to do it. It's a professional group that's behind it. We can do it. We will deliver, and we will listen to this planning commission. We will look at those things prior to getting to the board of supervisors. That is what we will absolutely do. And the board will ask us the same questions, I'm sure. This is being expedited because this is a high-priority investment in Carroll Island County. Yeah. No, and there's no July meeting as well. So, again, I respect, obviously, very much this planning commission. We want to work with you. Sorry, we're kind of all kind of rushed into this at this point, but I hear you. We're proposed, our proposal is good, if not better, than what was proposed before. We added an entrance, basically, and we actually added some assets, dedicated right-of-way. We included an emergency entrance, which wasn't there before. We have added elevations to our proffers, and we actually have limited the uses. I mean, we've constrained the uses. What we have proposed is who the viable users are likely going to be, who we are marketing to today. This is not speculative, other than what we're building, but these are the people we're marketing to today. So, we ask, give us a chance here to prove that we will make this work and make us successful with your conditions, which I think should give you some comfort level, that we will address the issues that have been raised tonight before the board of supervisors.
Mr. McKenzie, what are our limitations on, what can we ask so far as, because I know proffers is a limited subject, what can we ask so far as what goes in that building?
Can I?
Can I ask, then, right?
Yes, yes, that's right. I mean, again, the application that's before you, and I think what Mr. Payne was just saying was, you know, you can make a recommendation, and you can, you could say in the minutes that that recommendation is premised upon their representation, that they would look at those uses in between now and the board meeting, and come back with additional information about any of those uses that they are willing to proffer out.
And that certainly puts the board of supervisors on notice of your concerns, that we will have to address prior to getting there, which we will. I mean, again, I'm very confident we can proffer out of what was previously approved, probably all of those uses. Some of them kind of mix into the manufacturing piece, which I need to, you know, we need to figure out between staff and me and the client, whether they're really manufacturing or they're something else. But there's no sand and gravel operations going to happen on a 1.1 million-dollar, 1.1 million-square-foot facility. We're not going to, we're not going to be manufacturing asphalt in that site, so.
But see, another issue we might have is, what if, if the property is sold, then we have no control over, I mean, you know, you have said verbally, you know, you guaranteed some things, but I mean, if the property is sold to someone else, then...
The proffers run with the land, not with the owner. So, any new owner will be subject to whatever's in the proffers.
But not if, if the property is sold or something happens, you know, before you make them affect.
Well, don't forget, the property's already zoned M1 today, except for the Myers property, which is the five... which is the five-acre piece. So, today, we could, we could do a distribution center today. But what we're saying is, this is a better project with the additional five acres, with the additional entrance. It's a better project. And you've got a user who's ready to go, I mean, a developer who's ready to go now and make the investment, not wait 10 years, not wait 20 years. This is, this is, so nothing, what you're getting is a, is a plus from what's already approved. This is, this is not the other direction. So, I, I hear you, but the proffers are already restricted use today. And the Board of Supervisors makes that final decision, right? They make that final call. And then those proffers run with the land, not the owner. New owner comes in, the owner is subjected to what those improvements are.
We're aware of that, but there's, there's no restrictions. But what we're saying is, we're a little bit hazy on these restrictions of what's gonna go there. I mean, I know you have told us what you felt, you know, will work, but we don't have anything for our constituents in writing, so. And plus, we still have the traffic discussion.
Well, I, you know, again, on the traffic component, you know, it's reports from VDOT and staff are relatively new. We've responded to them based on what the traffic study provides. Again, no degradation of the level of services, C or better. It's consistent with your comprehensive plan. The left turn lanes don't warrant the day. However, as, just like discussing the uses, this is not the end of the road. We're happy to look at it as we move forward to the Board of Supervisors. They're gonna have the same questions. They're gonna have the same questions, same concerns, which we're gonna have to address, which we will. I just feel like that that's a, that's a good compromise in regards to moving forward, is that you've identified the issues as part of your condition to move the project forward, and they'll have to be addressed prior to, part of the Board of Supervisors. And, and again, look at what we're proposing. It's office, warehouse, storage, distribution, industrial reflect space and manufacturing. All of those are viable uses, all of them.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
You may, sir.
Good evening. There's an old adage in the legal profession that if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. I think what is being a bit of a stumbling block is that you're asking, or your client is asking, to remove previous problems, stipulations. So, once that is removed, I'll have a clearer slate. And I think some of my fellow commissioners would be more at ease with those stipulations still in place. I know I would. My main concern is the traffic. Now, I've looked at the artist's reception or the architect's reception. Showing four entrances, four exits. And in the traffic impact analysis on page two and subsequent pages, it's only three. Now, I realize these are about final. Of the three, there's one of those points designated for emergency services or the required.
One of those entrances is for emergency access. I believe it's the furthest one to the west, south.
South.
Yeah, sorry. And, and it's gated.
It's gated, sir. Been going over some of the figures from the, our staff report. They project 2,138 daily vehicle trips. I believe that is not in line with your executive case. Uh, I'm sorry, the CIA's. I think during the peak hours, it is, uh, it'd be A and hours, like 173, maybe 300 and some, yeah, four to six. So, during the course of the day, there's still a lot of traffic. The facility has 120 loading docks for truck trailers. I realize that more likely than not, all 120 are not going to be occupied because I don't think building the whole that many people to offload those trucks. But you're talking 120 docking slots. 300 in April with 400 and some spots parked in truck trailers. And 385 passenger bays. A lot of vehicles. Now, I realize that they're not all going to be occupied at the same time. But that is a huge area. A lot of spaces, and if you have that many spaces, it's going to be that much more business for the companies. Company or company, because they're looking at one or two business projects. That's still going to be an awful lot of traffic. Most of it probably is going to be trucking trailers. So, I'm concerned about safety factor, roadway factor, and what impact it's actually going to have on the people in the area. That is my main concern. I'll be quite honest with you. I I'm not sure how accurate that DI is. It's a projection. It's a guess. We're asking someone to look into it, first of all, to check. I realize that, thank you, that certain analysis that they've discussed and references that they've made historically. I just don't know whether they're going to be even closer to.
Yeah, Mr. Schwartz, I appreciate all of that. And, you know, our traffic engineer is here. Your, our daily counts are consistent in our analysis of what you just stated. It's 2,138 trips per day, based on the warehouse and distribution use. And he's called a high queue distribution use. AM at 173 and PM at 185. And remember that, you know, this is a 24/7 operation. So, not all that traffic hits at one time. It's spread out over 24 hours. I, I, we have not remotely sort of hidden the ball, if you will, that this is gonna be a heavy traffic generator. It's a 1.1 million square foot facility. It's, but it's invested in an area where you're encouraging that use. I mean, the county's comprehensive plan encourages this exact use at that location. And we're not migrating throughout the county. We're simply a quarter mile from the interchange, back and forth. So, and you guys are all very familiar with that area. It, it is, it is developed and built and infrastructureed for that type of place. And that's what we're proposing. So, I, there's no, there's no hidden agenda on the traffic. The traffic, the traffic is what it is. Now, on the use, and to your question and to some of the other Planning Commission members' questions, we're willing to proffer out some of the uses that were prohibited before. Because I, I'm very confident that what we propose is, is limited and inconsistent with what was proposed before, what, which is inconsistent, I'm sorry, with what was prohibited before. And I have only two exceptions, because I need to do a little more homework on it. If that's okay with everybody. So, the only two exceptions from what was approved before as prohibited would be 1A and 1C. All the rest of them, I'm very confident we can prohibit out. I just want to do some more homework on those two, because they, they talk about manufacturing, and I want to see how that trickles into what we're focusing on. If, if the Planning Commission's acceptable to that, we will proffer that, those prohibition of uses, if that, that makes sense. The only ones we ask that you create exceptions for, for us to do a little more homework on, are 1A and 1C. The rest of them we'll proffer out. We're happy to do it. And also on the traffic, just to follow up, we looked at, and Michael can, can add some color to this. We looked at whether the turn lanes were warranted, and they were not. And, and it's not, we, when, you know, when you suggest that maybe the traffic study isn't, isn't consistent with the county's analysis, the VDOT's analysis, we don't get to make up the data that goes into the analysis. That comes from the, from VDOT and its ITE analysis for a facility our large and a use, the use that we're proposing. So, we take that data from their modeling, and we plug it into our model, and it spits out what the impacts would be, the level of services that have been, that have been agreed to in a scoping arrangement between the county and VDOT. We don't, we don't get to make up where the intersections are analyzed. That's, that's agreed to by the county and VDOT. So, we take all of that information that we get from the county and VDOT, plug it into our analysis, and it spits out our report, right? And that report has to be consistent with the county and the VDOT's ITE modeling. So, it's not like our trips are wrong. Our trips are consistent with what that modeling is. The preference was for left turn lanes. I understand, I've never done a project where there's been a lot of traffic where VDOT or the county didn't ask for more infrastructure. But we, our job is to mitigate our impacts, and if the impact is not, we're not degrading, meaning we're not impacting those intersections any worse than where they are today, meaning level of service C or better. It gets to a D or E or F, now we got a different, different conversation going. Or if it warrants left turn lanes, we got a different conversation going on. But none of those things happen in our analysis. Now, does that mean we won't look at it going forward? Of course. We, we want infrastructure in place that's gonna serve the users that we're attracting. Why wouldn't we? We'd be crazy not to. That would impact our ability to attract a viable user. So, we hear you. We're just saying that the analysis is not requiring us to do it. And putting infrastructure in that's not necessary does what? It impacts the upfront investment that's occurring with your applicant and your developer who's trying to attract a user. It could, it could, it could bring a disadvantaged component to us to attract a user that's not intended by anybody. So, there's a lot of factors that go into this, and it's not a matter of the developer ignoring you or ignoring the county or VDOT. Now, we work together to try to come up with a project that works for everybody. Not only does this project, I think, work for everybody in regards to impact, but the economic potential and reality, quite honestly. You build a spec building, if I don't have a user in it, your tax revenue just went up threefold. $643,000 if we build the facility without a user. The user just adds more and more gravy, if you will, to the, to the, the tax generation that will occur on that site. Not to mention the fact that significant number of jobs, the quality of life improvements that will occur in Caroline County with those type of jobs at that site. A little more traffic? Yes. More economic development opportunity? Yes. So, we're gonna work with you. We're willing to take those uses out to make the Planning Commission feel more comfortable. We feel like we're not even, we're not even proffering those uses anyways. And I think that, I hope that will address your concerns.
Sure. I don't know. That itself. Now, look at your diagram. Showing truck up and downside. Right here, probably, yeah. Now, your truck's leaving, going on that fourth exit onto P2B Road. Now, how do they get, you know, on the front part, you have them coming in, coming out on the loop? But the ones on the back side is coming out, coming out on, on P2B Road. Now, that road itself is turning out from the second entrance you had, all the way back down to where Steinport Road. I live on Stein. And those vehicles come through there, truck trailers, dump truck. Cars start at 4:00 and 10:00, coming through that area, and come right by my house, going to Route 30, a shortcut. But they don't want to go to 95, they just come through there. What I'm concerned is that the truck, the truck you have coming out, we're at 4:05. You said you have a, with the emergency drive?
There's emergency access. There's an emergency entrance to the furthest south.
The diagram here is showing that they're leaving.
Do you, do you want to address the traffic flow, and if you or Michael want to and from the site, you want to address that? I'll let our traffic engineer address the traffic flow versus the lawyer, who probably is not as well-skilled as the traffic.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Young. I'm a traffic engineer and a project manager with Boom Consulting, and I prepared the traffic impact study for the site. Just to clear up the discussion about the number of driveways, what we did in our analysis is we actually looked at two separate scenarios. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at the worst possible case scenario in terms of a traffic impact. So, I want to reiterate, there are only three proposed driveways for the site. But as Commissioner Schwartz alluded to, there's a one-tenant and a two-tenant scenario. And that was just, again, for terms of our traffic impact, saying, you know, what could possibly come in? We want to make sure we're covering our bases. So, the one-tenant scenario included the three driveways, but what we did is we only analyzed the northern two driveways. And that third southermost driveway, as we've been saying, was reserved for emergency access only. It's my understanding, and I don't want to speak out of line here, but that, that's the intent of this site, is to have two functional driveways, the northernmost and the middle driveway, and then the third driveway as emergency access only. And that's the reason that we included that analysis in our study, the worst-case scenario. Another scenario that we prepared in our study just to show the county and VDOT what it would potentially look like is the three-driveway scenario, in which we would have two tenants, and the truck traffic for those two tenants would be divided up between the northernmost driveway and the southernmost driveway. So, you're correct, Commissioner Smith. There is a figure in here showing truck traffic entering that third driveway. We just included that for that two-tenant scenario. But what I want to drive home is that the one-tenant scenario, in which we're only using those two driveways from our standpoint, is the worst-case scenario for traffic, because we wouldn't be dividing up the traffic amongst those driveways quite as much, you know, only dividing it as two. So, that's why we wanted to include that in our analysis. So, that cleared things up. But again, it's my understanding that our preferred method is two driveways with a third as emergency access. And I can answer any, I know that traffic came up a bunch. I can answer any other questions you may have about that.
Yes, sir. In planning would it not be feasible, logical, to plan for the worst-case scenario and have three entry points that are available rather than maybe having to come back later and add another entry point?
So, I, I don't believe there's ever a proposal to add another entry point. I believe the goal is three entrances. It's just a matter of if that third entrance is emergency access only, or if it would be reserved for a user. And those are the two scenarios that we had analyzed in this study.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if you had any other questions regarding what we were proposing to proffer out uses that were consistent with the prior rezoning. I'm happy to provide more clarity if you like that, but we're proffering out all of them except for two, only because we need to do a little more homework on what the manufacturing components of that mean.
Well, I'm, I'm sure. I'm sure that I will personally relay my message to the BOS so they understand my concerns. And just simply, just so that we're all on the same page. And yes, you've made a very good presentation. You've answered a lot of questions. And I think, like Mr. Schwartz says, when it is in writing, it's a different scenario. That's all, okay? As an attorney, you know that. I think at this particular stage, unless the commissioners have any questions for the applicant, well done, well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate your patience. I really do. I appreciate your patience, I really do.
Mr. Weaver? Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Yes, Chris.
Yeah, Mr. Weaver, I just wanted to add one thing, just to clarify, uh, uh, how the proffers work for the board. That, you know, these, the proper uses can be defined in the positive or negative. I just wanna make sure that you're understanding this. The, as, as the, the property and Mr. Fincham or Mr. Payne, please interrupt me if I'm getting this wrong, but as currently zoned, the, the proper uses are defined in the negative in that they say, you know, there are these list of uses that are proffered out, they can't be used. The new application before you takes the opposite approach, approach and proffers uses in the positive and says, we will only use the, we will only use the property for these specific, specific uses. And I think there might have been some confusion there about how those operate. But by proffering something in the positive, there is kind of by implication certain uses that are proffered out that couldn't be done a, as part of those, um, positively defined uses. So I wanna make sure that's understood.
Sir, as far as your concern, Chris, keep up positives.
Yes, sir. And, and what's happened now is that Mr. Payne has, has, um, said that he'll do kind of a hybrid approach where he will provide the positive uses that they've said they will only use the property for as well as some, some proffered out uses. The ones that were previously stated, except for the two that he said he couldn't speak to.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, remember there are two separate rezonings, so the two motions. Yes, ma'am. The, the first, RZ zero four dash twenty twenty-one is the rezoning of the five point one nine acre parcel from RP to M1. That's on the back of the Mize property.
Mr. Schwartz, you ready to make a motion, sir? You have to make two motions.
Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, where is rezoning request RZ zero four twenty twenty-one? For Maria Mize owner, Clint Acquisition LLC. Appears to be generally inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the plan and keep the land used that where the public necessaries, needs, general welfare and good zoning practices warrant the power of this project. I recommend that RZ zero four twenty twenty-one be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of no.
Give her a second. Second. We'll ask, do you want it, pull it once? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries as submitted. Now, we have to have another motion for RZ oh five twenty twenty-one. R two oh seven LLC owner.
Where is rezoning request? RZ oh five two thousand two thousand and one. For appeal to the general consistency, goals and objectives of the plan and keep the land used that where the public necessary can be generally aware of that and it's known if I want to. Uh, for this plan, I recommend that RZ oh five one oh one be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of no.
We'll hear a second.
Second.
In second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Any normal matters, we done, Mike? Okay, any normal matters, we're done. Have a motion adjourned. We hear a motion.
I know that we adjourned.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, hearing none, we're done.